The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 5th of April 2017 have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Byam, councillor Lee, councillor Peter Martin and councillor Tom Martin and councillor Reynolds.
Thank you. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
None before the meeting, Chairman.
Thank you. Do members have any other non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Jolly good. Have there been any questions received from members of the public, Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Thank you. Peter, I understand, I know very well that you have a whole load of updates that you'd like to give us on government guidance and legislation.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll try and take you through them relatively quickly, bearing in mind the time of start. There's three matters just to update the committee on. The first one relates to the Neighbourhood Planning Act. Members may recall that I've previously provided an update to the committee on the Neighbourhood Planning Bill. This has now received royal assent and now comprises the Neighbourhood Planning Act 2017. The first part of the Act largely deals with the processing of neighbourhood plans. However, there are two sections which directly impact on development control and our decision-making function, so I'll just pull those two out. Section fourteen of the Act will introduce restrictions on the imposition of planning conditions which will require agreement from an applicant prior to a council applying any pre-commencement conditions. So if members effectively in discussion or debate of committee feel it appropriate to add additional conditions which aren't on the agenda, that require a Grahampean-style pre-commencement conditions, we will have to seek agreement from the applicants to apply these. So a recommendation from officers that if members are thinking of that ahead of the committee, that they advise officers leading up to it and we will seek to get agreement in principle and then we'll allow the committee to be able to move forward rather than have to bring it back and forward to the committee on that basis. However, that hasn't come into force yet. A commencement order is awaited and this is likely to take effect after the general election. In terms of section fifteen, this requires an amendment to the General permitted Development Order, restricts permitted development rights currently applying to pubs and wine bars but only if they actually fall within use class A4. It's important to note that a number of drinking establishments that they come under actually fall within use class A3 rather than A4 due to the service of food being a part of their business, so they fall outside that. So A3 uses would not be caught by changes or restrictions to permit a development. The General permitted Development Order has already been amended and the new restrictions on loss of A4 uses come into force on the 23rd of May this year. There's also an update to the EIA regulations. Regulations for the environmental impact assessment have been revised under Town and Country Planning EIA Regulations 2017 and these came into effect yesterday. The main difference introduced under these regulations are the validation requirements for screening opinions. It gives more flexibility to take mitigation into account before finding a development might be EIA development, sets out a scope for scoping opinions and says this is compulsory. So that's when we've decided that a development is EIA development, they then have to come to the council to scope out the requirement and detail of that EIA or the environmental statement. This must be completed by a competent person. Whilst the legislation doesn't give guidance on that, the MPPF picks up on guidance about that and you're looking for someone that's competent in that field and providing advice. It introduces additional items with regards to impacts on population, human health and risks from accidents and disasters, and specification of what we have to include in decision notices. And the last point is most probably more significant change is the further monitoring of conditions which we do, but there's a slight different process now in terms of dealing with EIA development as terms of monitoring those conditions. So we now have four processes in play when considering EIA development. So the last point relates to housing land supply. The council's housing land supply assessment has now been updated with a base date of the 1st of April this year. The updated assessment demonstrates that we are now able to demonstrate an adequate supply of housing need when applying a five percent buffer. This has deemed to be appropriate by the local plan inspector and is considered to override previous inspectors' conclusions when assessing recent appeal schemes when a twenty percent buffer was applied, so that provides us with great clarity around that. Accordingly, this is material to the termination of planning applications for housing. However, I would add that it does not change conclusions on any applications before the committee this evening and when Chris takes you through that here confirm that also. Thank you, Chairman. I will circulate a note on that because there's quite a lot of detail there.
Thank you, Peter. Members, as we were running late, unless anybody's got any burning questions, can you contact Peter outside of the meeting? Thank you. So if we move on to the first item on the agenda which is item A1, erection of seventeen dwellings. Ah, yes, sorry, I've got a note here that if we have any site visits being necessary as of, after consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 12th of June at a time to be agreed. So moving on, item A1, erection of seventeen dwellings including twelve affordable new accesses from Petworth Road and Wormley Lane together with landscaping following the demolition of existing buildings at Orchard Farm, Wormley Lane, Hampaldon, GU85TS, amended plans and updated drainage strategy received on the 24th of November 2016. Chris, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of seventeen dwellings following the demolition of the existing buildings. The proposal is submitted as a rural exception scheme with twelve units proposed to be affordable housing and the remaining five units to be market homes required in order to facilitate the provision of the affordable dwellings. There are some updates which are contained within the addendum. I'll run through these now. An additional letter of objection has been received from Whitely Parish Council confirming that they remain concerned about the potential for increased flood risk. Their response is provided in full within the addendum. Two additional neighbour representations have been received, one in support and one raising objection. The objection comment raises concerns with the ability to implement the drainage strategy and concerns with the use of conditions to secure the additional drainage information. The addendum also draws members' attention to the written ministerial statement published in 2015 which confirms that unmet housing need is unlikely to outweigh the harm to the green belt and constitute very special circumstances. It's material in this case that a scheme solely proposing affordable housing to meet local needs would not require very special circumstances to outweigh the impact on the green belt. The very special circumstances in this case relate to the market dwellings and it is the market dwellings that are required to support the provision of the affordable to meet the identified local need. It's recommended that condition four be amended as there's a typographical error. The first bullet point on the second sentence should read not increased flood risk. Additional conditions twenty-five to twenty-eight are also recommended. Twenty-five and twenty-six you will see in the addendum relate to ecology and twenty-seven and twenty-eight are in relation to contaminated land and remediation. There's also one update to the committee report which is not within the addendum. If you turn to page thirty-seven...
Chris, just a minute, councillor.
Can we have the page numbers for those, please?
Page numbers?
For the amendments.
Condition fours on page fifty-nine? Yep. And the conditions twenty-five and to twenty-eight are purely within the addendum. Because they're additional conditions. Thank you, Chairman. There's one update that's not within the addendum and it's to page thirty-seven of the officer's report. Paragraph four on page thirty-seven. That refers to the housing need identified in the 2015 Hampaldon survey. In addition to the five affordable rents and the six shared ownership units referred to in the report, the 2015 SCA housing needs survey also identified the need for two units of either shared ownership or affordable rent. So that takes the total to fifteen rather than eleven which is referred to in the committee report. Finally, there's adjustments within the addendum to recommendation A which is to allow any resolution for approval to be subject to consultation with the Secretary of State for twenty-one days under the call-in procedure. This is because approval would be of a major scheme for the purposes of the Town and Country Planning Consultation Direction within the green belt which is only permitted due to very special circumstances. That's the final update. I'll run through the details of the application. This is the location plan, the application site is outlined in red on this plan and it forms 3.7 hectares parcel of land between the Petworth Road which runs down here to the south and Wormley Lane which runs in a kind of V shape around the site. You can see there's a cluster of existing buildings within the site down there to the south. Notably, the Petworth Road and the Wormley Lane boundaries are defined by mature vegetation limiting the views into the site. There's also a change in levels across the site, so the south part of the site is on lower land and it raises up towards the north. As you'll see from the officer's report, the sites within the green belt, ANOB, area of outstanding natural beauty, and AGLV, area of great landscape value. There are listed buildings around the site, notably Wood End is marked on this plan which is grade two listed and I've marked Tigborne Court on this plan as well which is a grade one listed property. This is an aerial photograph of the site and the site's been highlighted in red again. Whilst the site is not within a settlement boundary, you can see that there are other residential properties in the surrounding area. Whitely Train Station has been marked on the plan, it's approximately 650 metres to the west of the application site. And this is the site layout plan. Plots one to five are proposed as market dwellings and the plots five to seventeen which are down to the south are the proposed affordable dwellings. I've marked the market dwellings, I've outlined those in blue just to make it clear which the two are. The scheme proposes three vehicular access points, one new vehicular access point directly onto the Petworth Road and widening of an existing access point onto Wormley Lane and the provision of a separate access, a new separate access onto Wormley Lane to provide an access for plot one. The twelve affordable units are located closest to the access with Petworth Road and are laid out in an unregulated form. The closest to these dwellings is set back approximately twenty metres from the road frontage. The proposed market houses to the north are close to the existing access with Wormley Lane and parking would be provided for each property with a total of fifty spaces. The proposal meets the adopted parking guidance. The layout also allows for the provision of 1.97 hectares of public open space which is to the north and east, so it's this area here. There are footpaths directly to the north-east and to the south-east which are proposed to provide routes through the developments and there's also a footpath link to the Petworth Road down here. The layout shows the separation of approximately, allows for a separation of approximately eighty metres between the closest dwelling and Tigborne Court with the existing dwellings of the Shelling, Fedway and San Romeo down here already closer to the listed building than those that are being proposed. The officer's report recognises that there is some impact on the wider setting of Tigborne Court, however considers that any harm would be less than substantial and would be outweighed by the benefit, the public benefits of delivering the scheme. Similarly, as you can see from the layouts, there would be sufficient separation between the proposed development and Wood End which is to the north which is on the opposite side of the Wormley Lane. Any harm to the wider setting of this property is also outweighed by the benefits of delivering the scheme. To the south, the closest neighbouring dwelling is the Shilling which is down to the south here. The boundary of this property is approximately thirty metres from the flank boundary of the closest dwelling. And these are some of the elevations of the proposed dwellings. This is plot one. Plot one would be the self-build plot. The legal agreement would require this plot to be sold off as a separate self-build plot rather than being built out by the applicant. The building would have a ridge height of approximately nine point two metres and is a five-bedroom property. This is plot two. It would be a detached two-storey, three-bedroom dwelling and have a ridge height of approximately eight point eight metres. And you can see it has a attached double garage. And these are plots three and four. These are also part of the market provision. They would be two-bedroom chalet bungalows, they would both be the same, three and four, and would have a ridge height of approximately six point nine metres. And plot five would be a two-storey dwelling, as you can see, has a gable feature on the front and a ridge height of approximately ten point five metres. These are plots six and seven, so these would be part of the affordable provision and would provide one and, so would provide a one and a two-bedroom bungalow. And you can see that, you can see how the space is laid out there with a single bedroom kind of kitchen dining areas. And these are plots eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. The front elevation on the top left would face out towards the public open space. The rear elevation which is down, which is down on the bottom of the slide would face in towards the development. Officers consider that both elevations are well-designed frontages. And these are the floor plans for those buildings. You can see that they're two- and three-bedroom properties with living accommodation on the ground floor. This is plot ten and eleven which would sit between the properties that we've just seen. It's of a similar design although slightly smaller than the adjoining buildings and would provide a bit of variation between the designs of the properties. And these are the floor plans for plots ten and eleven. Both would be two-bedroom units. And plots sixteen and seventeen are the ones that are located closer to the Petworth Road. They comprise two one-bedroom units. They're on kind of a corner within the development and they've got side gables with bay windows and officers consider that to be an appropriate design. A number of section plans have been submitted with the application. What I've tried to do when I've shown the section plans is provide a plan below that has the viewpoints marked on it. The dwelling shown on the right there is plot one which you can see here and that provides a view through the middle of the site looking towards the market provision. These are some more section plans, as you can see it runs through the centre of the site. You've got plots three and four here which are part of the market provision then, as you move to the right, that's plot eight to fifteen which are the semi-detached affordable units that we looked at a moment ago. And this is a section, this section shows the relationship with the adjoining buildings, although it's recognised that the boundary screening would soften the impact as viewed from the Petworth Road, it does give some comparison in terms of scale between the proposal and the existing buildings. So you've got Tigborne Court here and then you've got the existing buildings which neighbour Tigborne Court at the moment. And then these are the proposed market units to the left there, sorry, no, the affordable semi-detached units to the left there. And then you've got the market units on the far left. These plans show the points of access. The plan on the top left shows the proposed access onto the Petworth Road. The light blue line that runs through that shows the visibility display which is on the roadside of the tree belt. The plan on the bottom right shows the access onto Wormley Lane which would be the access on the left of that bottom right slide is the modified access, so it's in the same location as the existing and would serve the, or would be close to the four market dwellings. And the access on the right-hand side there is a new access which would serve the proposed self-build unit. And these are some photographs from the site. The plan on the bottom shows an estimation of where those are taken from and what, and the view that they would provide. So on the, on the top left, actually both of these photographs show a view across what would be the open space. The open space would primarily be to the left. You can, you can make out from these photographs the position of the existing buildings on the right-hand side and the Petworth Road runs to the far right of those. These photographs are taken from outside of the site looking towards the boundaries. The one on the top left is looking from Wormley Lane in towards the existing access and the one on the bottom right is looking from the Petworth Road across and towards the application site and you can see the existing screening that runs along that boundary. Photograph on the top left here shows the existing buildings which are proposed to be demolished and the photograph to the right is taken from within what would be the open space looking towards Tigborne Court. On this slide, the determining issues have been split into matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment. With regards to housing need and drainage, I have Andrew Smith, Head of Strategic Housing and Delivery, and Glenn Westmore from Surrey County Lead Local Flood Authority who will provide a summary on the matters in relation to housing need and drainage once I've finished my presentation. Turning to the matters of technical opinion, at the top of the list we have the principle of development. With regards to matters of principle, policy H6 of the local plan allows for the provision of affordable housing outside of the settlement boundaries in very exceptional circumstances. Similarly, the MPPF in paragraph eighty-nine considers the construction of limited affordable housing for local needs to be an appropriate form of development in the green belt. Paragraph fifty-four of the MPPF recognises that some market housing may be required to bring forward rural exception sites. However, it remains the case that the market housing is not listed within paragraph eighty-nine as an appropriate form of development in the green belt. Therefore, very special circumstances would need to be demonstrated to outweigh the harm to the green belt for the market units. In considering the principle of development, the rural housing need in the area is a material consideration and a housing needs survey dated January 2015 has been submitted with the application. It's also material that the viability of the scheme has been independently reviewed and concluded that the market housing proposed does not exceed that reasonably required to subsidise the development of the twelve affordable units. With regards to housing land supply, there has been a change since the time of the writing of the officer's report such that we feel we can now demonstrate an MPPF-compliant five-year supply of housing. Whilst in the officer's report the delivery of the scheme against the backdrop of an MPPF five-year supply was presented as a benefit, the change in position does not alter the planning balance in such a way as to alter the officer's recommendation in this instance. There would be some impact on trees principally at the points where the access to the development would punch through the tree belts. However, this would not be harmful in character terms and the measures can be put in place to ensure significant trees are retained. Subject to conditions, the scheme is considered acceptable with regards to other technical matters such as archaeology, highway safety and flood risk. Turning to the matters of judgment which are on the right-hand side of the slide, the design layout is considered by officers to be acceptable and provides a variety of housing in a form that responds positively to the surroundings. The layout provides sufficient parking, access and permeability through the site as well as the benefit of a large public open space. Turning to the impact on the character of the green belt, it's recognised that the development would introduce built form into what is currently an undeveloped site. However, the scheme is low in density, set back from the road frontages and provides buildings of an appropriate scale and design and would be in keeping with the character of the area. Furthermore, the site contains several buildings and hard standings which are to be removed. It's considered the characteristics of the scheme are not harmful to the rural character. Similarly, with regards to the ANOB and the AGLV, it's recognised there would be some impact by introducing new development. However, any harm is limited by the characteristics of the site and the proposed layout of the There are other residential dwellings in the immediate surroundings, therefore residential development would not be out of keeping with the character of the area. Whilst the heritage impact is a matter of technical opinion, in this instance, the impact on the setting of the listed buildings and the weight attributed to that matter is a matter of judgment to be weighed against any benefit. Views have been sought from the Historic England and the council's heritage officer on this scheme and whilst it is recognised there would be some impact on the wider setting of Tigborne Court, officers consider the harm to be less than substantial and outweighed by the benefits of delivering the scheme to meet housing need. With regards to residential amenities, the impact on neighbouring properties and the future occupants of the development, officers consider the proposal would not result in conditions prejudicial to residential amenity. Finally, as set out in the officer's report, the very special circumstances need to be demonstrated in relation to the proposal as the scheme represents an inappropriate green belt development due to the provision of the market housing. In officer's opinion, it's material that the development is low-density and well-designed. Furthermore, the market housing is not beyond what is reasonably required to provide the affordable housing. In this instance, significant weight is given to, is given as a very special circumstance that the market provision would supply, would support the delivery of the appropriate level of affordable housing to meet local need. As set out in the addendum... As set out in the addendum, the revised recommendation, A, is that permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman. I'll now pass to Andrew Smith to run through the matters in relation to housing need.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chris. Just really, three points I'd like to make to members this evening. First of all, why this scheme is needed. Our villages need homes that people can afford to live in. That is, local people, people here from the village of Hampden. Now, a housing need survey was carried out over two years ago now. It was an independent measure of need carried out by Surrey Community Action that works independently in the county with partner housing associations, local authorities, to assess housing need in our villages and small towns. The survey is over two years old and is a snapshot in time of the need at that point. The survey has a great use in raising awareness, getting discussion going and getting people thinking about affordable homes in the village, as well as providing an accurate, at that point, assessment of need. No affordable homes have been built in Hampden since that survey, and in fact, since 2000, when the Duncombe cottages scheme was built. It is evident, I think, that we can say that the need for affordable homes for local people in Hampden will have increased. When delivering rural schemes like this, it is often the case that a second-stage survey is carried out. People who live in our villages who are in housing need don't really ever believe that anything will happen to solve their housing need, but once planning permission, if it were granted, and people see signs of development, then people tend to come out and they tend to register an interest in those homes, people who are eligible to live in them, people on lower incomes, people that we need in our villages to keep them sustainable. And if a second-stage survey is carried out, it increases and firms up need. But this scheme as well has enormous benefits to the local community. The term 'in perpetuity' can hardly ever be used now for affordable housing, because recent changes mean that housing associations can now offer right-to-buy to existing tenants. But if an exception site is granted planning permission, the homes that are built on that site are affordable in perpetuity, which means they cannot be sold under right-to-buy, which means the ten rented homes that may be granted permission will be a resource for the village in perpetuity. The two shared ownership units will be restricted to eighty per cent staircasing. That means that a shared owner can only ever own eighty per cent. The golden share is owned by the housing association, and when that shared owner comes to sell or wants to sell, then that is controlled so that local people can acquire that property. It's the only area of affordable housing delivery you'll find now where this actually applies. So affordable housing in perpetuity for local people. The Milford Hospital scheme is not far away, but that takes housing need from the whole of the borough, and there's right-to-buy on those rented properties. So it's a very different kind of scheme, and the section 106 that would run with the scheme will enshrine the purposes of the scheme and who is qualified to live in the affordable homes. And it'll be a legally binding document for that scheme. So people from Hampden Parish and the cascade of parishes that you'll see in the committee report. So there are very special benefits for this. It's a different kind of scheme. And then, how is Orchard Farm to be funded? Now, the last affordable homes to be built in the parish were Duncombe cottages. They would have had considerable subsidy from the land that was acquired for the properties and also for the housing corporations it was then. Now, the Homes and Communities Agency made considerable grant to subsidise those homes. Neither of those things happened now. Government grant is significantly reduced by some sixty to seventy per cent from what it was in those days, and also the huge emphasis is on funding affordable home ownership. And so the government introduced the affordable rent regime, where housing associations could charge up to eighty per cent of the rent, which would enable them to borrow privately to build new affordable homes. The MPPF recognised that and then allowed for the delivery of or the provision of some market homes to enable affordable homes to be built. So there's no grant and there is no subsidy in the land. Now, English Rural Housing Association are proposing to deliver ten rented units and two shared ownership units, as well as the five market homes. That's a considerable number of rented homes for people on low incomes in Hampden and the surrounding small villages. As I say, affordable in perpetuity to local people. The Ricardo Court scheme in Bramley, when it was granted consent, also showed a mix of market and affordable homes in order to subsidise the affordable. And that, I think, when we see these sites coming forward, they're a good benchmark that we can use in negotiating with developers to make sure that we do get benefits for local people. So really, they're just the things I want to say, the need for the scheme, why it has very special benefits to Hampden and surrounding villages, and how the funding has so changed in recent times, meaning that market homes need to be provided to enable the affordable homes to be built. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. I've been asked to speak by Waverley to summarise the level of flood risk on the site and summarise the proposals in terms of surface water and groundwater risk. In terms of the MPPF, new developments should be safe from the current flood risk on-site and should also not increase the risk of flooding off-site to their neighbours. The proposal should follow the fourteen National Sustainable Standards. In summary, the relevant ones here are that the rates of flow off the site should be reduced to greenfield, as if there were no development at all on the site, or to pre-development rates. And also that flooding within the development should not occur in a one thirty-year storm or be suited to be managed in a one hundred-year rainfall event. There's no requirement at all to reduce existing flood risk in the surrounding areas, but obviously that's seen as beneficial where that's proposed. Firstly, a quick summary of the existing flood risk and the surface water flows and groundwater flows on the site. As Chris has mentioned, the site's on the side of Gorse Hill, and a significant surface water flow comes down that hill and runs down the road. At present, that floods at the actual road there. There are actually two ditches to the either side of the road, but very little flow goes into those ditches. There's also groundwater emergence on the site, as well as comes out the side of the hill as it hits the differing geology, and that groundwater flow then heads down towards the existing properties at south. There's existing risk of flooding on those nearby properties of a combination of the flow coming down from the groundwater and particularly the surface water flows as it runs towards the runs off the road to the properties which are slightly lower. The flooding infrastructure there, there's also at the confluence of Lane End and Pettworth Road, there's a small culvert there, which isn't really the correct size for that particular area, and the surface water backs up and floods across that section, but also that backs all the way up to the properties adjoining the site. The other existing flow route is on the south side of Pettworth Road, where water from the road and from the main ditch there crosses around the corner of the site and flows along New Road and under a culvert there to the south to the rest of the drainage network and ultimately the river locks to the south. And it's worth saying that local residents have initially installed a drainage ditch and the long green arrow... Sorry, if you go back one, Chris. Actually, you can stay on that one. The red arrow in the centre of that diagram there, there's an informal drainage ditch there, which picks up some of the surface water flow across the site, the bottom of the site, which is the local residents trying to address their own level of risk on the site. Looking at the existing infrastructure that's present, and there's a large number of road gullies down Pettworth Road, all of which should discharge into the adjacent ditch. Unfortunately, those are no longer functional, they're all buried, and most of the water actually runs down the centre of the road on either side. There's also a number of grips, so channels cut in the verge on the north side of Pettworth Road, which should flow into the drainage channel on the north of the road. Again, those aren't no longer functional, so actually, the majority of the runoff down the road continues down the road and not into the drainage ditches on the side. There's a small culvert which runs from the adjoining properties, much on the blue dotted line in the centre of the drawing there. That's a very small culvert, and in times of hope, flow that backs up and isn't able to cope with the water that's going into it. It's recently been blocked, and a few repairs have been made to it by our Hymoes colleagues. It's interesting, though, there's also marked on the map a pipe which is supposed to cross between the north of Pettworth Road to the south. We do believe that's there, but again, it's not functioning, it's not carrying water from the north to the south. The other sort of flow routes in the area basically are around to the north, which run round Lane End and then connect further down to the south of Pettworth Road. As I say, there's also a connection in from the informal drainage ditch, which collects groundwater and surface water flow from the site, which again connects into the ditch and that small culvert just to the north of the shillings. The local residents during times of flood have to pump water out of this area. There's quite a high amount of groundwater flow and surface water flow which comes in there, so there is a quite high level of existing risk in that area. If I move on, I've tried to simplify the drainage diagram that was provided in the application to try and highlight some of the areas which have been brought forward in the submission. I'll go through and I've numbered the comments here, and I'll go through them sort of one by one. So the proposal is that the existing surface water flows alongside the road are put into those existing ditches, repairing the infrastructure along those sections, which would hopefully take some of the surface water flows off of the road and into the ditches which are there. The surface water flows from the development itself will be collected and attenuated and passed into a step swell, which is basically a long linear ditch which runs on the inside of the boundary of the site. It's kind of a ziggurat shape as it runs through, and each stage basically slows the water flows as it goes through, but also provides storage for that water. As doing this, it basically allows some space for all of the water from the runoff from the site to be attenuated and so that the discharge can be made at the greenfield rate. So the development itself should not increase the rate of water flow off the site. Number three shows a larger formalised channel, so very similar to the channel that's been dug by the residents, but a more formal engineered structure, which again collects surface water flows across the site and then directs those to the exit point on the southern end of the site on to Pettworth Road. At that restriction device, the sort of the yellow dot on there, there are two flow restriction devices which are put in place to basically restrict the flow off that site to what would be existing. The two, the three separate flows from that are, one are the surface water across the wider area, one is the flow from the development itself, and then the other is the flow coming down through from the road drain. There's two new twin pipes to be put in underneath the road there, so replacing the existing defunct infrastructure. Those will cross under from the ditch on the northern side to the southern side and then link up with the existing ditch there. Those ditches will be dug out and re-graded to take the flows as they come across. And number seven, there will again be two upgraded pipes which take the flow from the corner of Pettworth Road, New Road. There's one existing culvert there, which is again very small and undersized, so again there'll be an upgrade of those two pipes. Also proposed is a new set of pipes to act as a flood relief route, which will cross the end of New Road and basically link the drainage system sort of to the west of New Road to the right. And it's worth noting that the existing ditches infrastructure and the channel to the northern side won't be touched, so that infrastructure will stay the same. So basically, the planning submission collects and restricts the surface water from the increase in hard standing, and it restricts it to the greenfield rates, and then discharges to its improved ditches. There's also improvements which aren't necessarily related to the development, to the road drainage, the existing ditches and the crossings, and the additional flood flow route as well. So in summary, my recommendations from looking at the development is that it meets the fourteen National Sustainable Drainage Standards, and it doesn't increase flood risk. The groundwater will continue to flow, and the emergence on the hill will be collected and directed towards an improved land drainage system. Surface water rates of flow are reduced to the pre-development rates and are directed away from the existing areas at which flood. And the existing drainage infrastructure which the local residents have put in will be retained, so that's a recommendation that I'm making. I think the upgraded local drainage systems will help reduce flood risk actually in the off-site locations, which again isn't a requirement for planning, but obviously is seen as beneficial. And also made some suggested conditions as well, which is usual in these matters, for the detailed design of the network and the drainage elements will be conditioned and again to pass through myself for approval. And some parts of that will be exceedance flow routes, so what happens if a flow or a rainfall event occurs which is greater than that's what's been designed for, how the system will be maintained, and also how the drainage will be maintained during construction as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Glenn. Chris, have you anything to add? Or... No? Okay. This is a public speaking item, and I believe the procedure has been explained to those of you that are speaking, so I would like to first invite the objector, Paul Stone, to speak. Good evening, Mr Stone. You have four minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, councillors and planning officers. I am part of a large group of Hampden and Whitley residents objecting to this development proposal. As Hampden Parish Council states in its objection, the proposal is not small-scale in the context of Hampden, and is likely to harm the character of the village and countryside in the green belt and area of outstanding natural beauty, and we fully agree. Originally, the applicant wanted to acquire part of Orchard Farm and build six homes in keeping with Hampden's needs, the size of Hampden's existing affordable development of Duncombe's cottages, and parish council aspirations. But eventually, the applicant acquired the entire farm and increased the development to seventeen homes. The Hampden Housing Need Survey has been misused to justify this number, as the author's guidance requires the gross figure to be adjusted downwards, between three and five, consistent with Waverley's housing register. The proposed development conflicts with many core tenets of planning policy. Firstly, it fails to meet criteria in the local plan for qualification as a rural exception site. Secondly, the Borough Council's pre-application advice concluded it would create isolated homes in conflict with the national planning policy framework. Oddly, this advice has now changed, with many sustainability issues being brushed aside. Thirdly, the planning framework requires brownfield redevelopment not to harm the openness of the green belt. Yet this development stretches way beyond the previously developed area, especially plot one, and legal precedent has established that any building on open land in such a redevelopment harms openness. It is thus non-compliant. Fourthly, the development fails to uphold the emphasis policies place on conserving landscape character and scenic beauty in areas of planning restraint. The case officer has downplayed the character and rural nature of this site. In contrast, the Surrey Hills AONB officer, surely an important arbiter, considers conflicts with planning policies while refusal of the application. To justify multiple planning policy infringements, the provision of affordable housing is cited by the case officer to invoke very special circumstances. But for the recent Hampden Mary Harriers application, the case officer noted that National Planning Practice Guidance states unmet housing need is unlikely to outweigh harm to the green belt and other harm, and concluded very special circumstances did not apply. It is clear this determination should equally apply to Orchard Farm. It is clear this determination should equally apply to Orchard Farm. Serious drainage issues affecting the site remain unresolved. These are fundamental technical and implementation matters that must be resolved if increased flood risk to nearby properties is to be avoided. Some are showstoppers and require refusal of the application. They should not be left as post-approval conditions, and Whitley Parish Council's objections state similar concerns. Unlike the application, Borough Council reviews acknowledge Hampden's lack of local services and amenities and extensive use of cars from the development will be inevitable. There are also serious road safety issues for pedestrians and motorists as noted in Hampden and Whitley Parish Council's objections. Finally, the site is bordered by Luchin's houses, including the renowned Grade One listed Tigborne Courts, whose exceptional quality has been attested by numerous prestigious authorities. Their rustic setting is fundamental to the historic and cultural value. The proposal has attracted 183 objections, an enormous number considering the size of our community, yet a few would oppose a modest redevelopment.
Can you sum up, please?
We have provided an economic study which shows that a much smaller development could be viable, and we believe this could be down to one-third of the proposed size. Considering the points raised, we request...
Thank you, Mr Stone, I think I'm going to have to stop you now, thanks, otherwise it's not fair on the others.
Okay, thank you.
Please, may I now invite councillor John Anderson from Hampden Parish Council and councillor Gillian McColden from Whitley Parish Council to speak. Good evening councillors, you have two minutes each from when you start speaking.
Hello, my name is Gillian McColden. I'm parish councillor on Whitley Parish Council. As I only have two minutes to address you, I'm going to focus on our key area of concern, which is flood risk and drainage. In particular, the plan to drain water from the Orchard Farm site under the A283 into ditches in Whitley Parish which lead to the end of New Road. This is an area which will ready floods when it rains heavily. If additional water is not dealt with adequately, the results could be catastrophic. In the revised response from Glenn Westmore, he lists information about the drainage plan that should be provided before construction but have not been provided yet. The list is shown in condition four on page three of your update document or page fifty-nine of the original document. It includes fundamental items such as design calculations, details of the proposed work to the ditches and confirmation that the development will not increase flood risk elsewhere, things you'd like to think would have been presented to us before now. We contend that all the items listed in condition four should be provided before planning approval is given. The revised response from Surrey County Council also states that the off-site drainage will be paid for by the developers, but there is no written commitment from them to that effect. Finally, and perhaps most crucially, the developers will require the cooperation of local landowners to make the plan work. If this is not forthcoming, they will be unable to complete it. There is no viable Plan B. To sum up, it is beyond unreasonable to drain water from the site into a neighbouring parish without having a written commitment to a detailed viable implementable plan to deal with the consequences.
Thank you councillor.
To approve this application before such a plan is in place would be irresponsible.
Thank you.
Mr Chairman, Hampden Parish Council has always supported the provision of affordable housing in the village, the need for which has been consistently demonstrated since 1990. Hampden needs a mix of housing and not just executive homes. In its initial refusal of the Orchard Farm application, the Parish Council stated that it would be happy to carry out a further review if the following concerns could be addressed. Although the Parish Council is worried that in relation to Hampden, the development was not small scale, it agrees with your officers that it does comply with the guidance set out in the NPPF. It recognises that identified local needs for affordable housing can now only be met by self-financing schemes, and therefore accepts that Hampden's identified need is met by a development of the size and mix that is proposed. As regards its concerns that Orchard Farm was not an appropriate site for the development given its potential impact on the openness and character of the Green Belt and the AONB, the Parish Council is pleased to note the importance which your officers attach to this point and to the potential impact of the development on the adjacent heritage assets. The Parish Council agrees with your officers' conclusions that given the design, layout and scheme in the context of its overall surroundings, the level of its impact will be insufficient to justify its refusal. The proposed Section 106 agreement securing the process of the nominations agreement and directing priority to households from Hampden addresses the Parish Council's concerns on this point. As both Waverley and the local lead flood authority are now satisfied with the drainage scheme as currently proposed and amplified by the comprehensive conditions, the Parish Council is able to withdraw its early objections on this issue. Approving the application will provide an early opportunity to alleviate the present flooding risk to adjacent properties as this problem will be taken into account in the final drainage design. As regards management responsibilities for the open space, the Parish Council is pleased to note this will be covered by Section 106 agreement. As Hampden Parish Council now considers its previous expressed concerns have been addressed, it is able to support the application subject to the satisfactory completion of Section 106 agreements and conditions as set out in the officers' report which states...
Thank you councillor.
...the adverse impact of the development would not outweigh the benefits that this scheme provides.
Thank you. I'll now invite the applicant Mick Hughes to speak. Good evening, Mr Hughes, you have four minutes also. Thank you.
Mr Chairman, councillors, English Rural Housing Association is a rural specialist and a locally based housing provider of affordable homes. Within Waverley, we have developed and managed fourteen schemes in nine different villages. Primarily rural exception sites, these schemes range in size from four to fifteen affordable dwellings. Our schemes are well regarded and over the years have featured in the biennial Waverley Borough Council Design Awards. The need for affordable housing in Waverley has always been recognised. However, as house price trends continue to outstrip average wages, fewer people are able to purchase their own home, and those that can are doing so much later in their lives. Each week, there are news reports, published studies documenting the housing situation is worsening and recommending parties work together to build new homes, especially for rent. Council's housing register and the Hampden Housing Needs Surveys evidence a local need from within the parish which this proposal would respond to. The proposal has the support of the council's housing strategy and enabling manager. The principle of the rural exceptions policy applying in Hampden was established in 2000 when permission was granted for our first scheme within the village. As is often the case when you build for people within a community, those original homes have remained occupied by the first households. And with no new affordable homes in Hampden since that date, opportunities for the past seventeen years, almost a generation, have been few and far between. Orchard Farm is a sustainable rural location with a community shop, post office, bus stops and Whitley railway station all within easy walking distance. Orchard Farm presently does not add to the visual character and high quality of the wider landscape. This comprehensive proposal seeks to address that anomaly through centring the homes on the previously developed land, clearing away the extensive dilapidated and unsightly mix of outbuildings, offices, stables and barns, and also seeking to protect and enhance those parts of the site that have true potential landscape value through a designated and extensive area of new landscaped public open space. This will provide public access for the first time, linking existing public footpaths through natural desire lines and rule out any future or further residential development. The detail accompanying these design principles have been honed through a series of public exhibitions, public meetings, presentations and individual discussions with residents and groups of residents. Pre-application planning advice has provided valuable feedback from the Historic Buildings Officer and the Urban Design Officer which has been duly incorporated. The proposal includes five market dwellings, two of which are chalet bungalows suitable for downsizers. Priority will be given to local people. The market properties will release funds, cross-subsidising the affordable homes, the new public open space and a comprehensive new drainage infrastructure. The latter has been the subject of closely liaison with Surrey County Council's SUDS team to ensure the financial investment arising from the development delivers an improvement to the current drainage infrastructure both on and off site. Opportunities for new affordable homes in our rural villages are scarce. This is a rare and exciting opportunity. I would urge you to support the officers' recommendation.
Thank you, Mr Hughes. Members, I open it up to you. Sorry. I've forgotten your name Liz, I'm sorry. Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I have a question if I may. Bearing in mind that we've been down this flood issue with our own first lane, I wonder please if there is a maintenance plan lined up for the maintenance of this drainage and whether it's likely to stay in place in perpetuity if any company goes defunct or whatever, please.
Would you like to address that now, yes?
Thank you, Chairman. So firstly, the recommendation deals with the management strategy for the open space and SUDS, you have a management strategy there, and condition five, I'm just getting the page, on page sixty-one of your agenda, sorry, sixty, apologies, deals with how it will be maintained and protected, so we've got that security through those conditions and the legal agreement. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a question while we're dealing with the floods, or the drainage, could we just go back to the Surrey County Council slide which had nine numbers on and arrows? That, one before, that's it. I'm concerned about the blue arrow going south-west from two. This is surface water flows from the development, so this is presumably new surface water which will be added to whatever the situation is at the moment. And then the capacity of those various drains and ditches, are there calculations in existence to support the fact that the capacity of the drains and ditches is greater than the surface water which is flowing from the development? Thank you.
Glenn, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the calculations have been provided to show that the amount of water that's taking off the site from surface water is being attenuated and calculations show that up to the 100-year event plus climate change, it can be accommodated and stored on-site to outflow at the current rates of flow.
Councillor Upton, then Councillor Holder. Councillor Thornton, I'm sorry, I'm getting all my names mixed up.
Thank you, Chairman. Can we go to the next slide, please? The summary, the sum up one, that's it. Glenn said the groundwater will continue to flow and emergence will be collected and directed towards the land drainage system. Well, I'm pretty sure he said the land drainage system is defunct at the moment. But it doesn't say the new land drainage system, that's all I'm saying. Will this, can I just ask one question? Will this happen before the development starts, the drainage system, or will it be after the development?
As part of the conditions, one of the things we're asking for is the construction phasing plan, so adequate drainage is either the system goes in first or other adequate alternative drainage is put in during that time. And sorry, just to address the point on the groundwater, it will be directed towards the new system as it's put in.
Sorry, can I come back, Chairman? So the summary of recommendations, would that be changed before we, obviously we need to add the new drainage system into that rather than the drainage system that's defunct?
Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm one of the two ward councillors for Hampden and Whitley. This application was first conceived over two years ago, with the application being submitted last year. The site is situated three-quarters of the way down Gorse Hill adjacent to the Pettworth Road as you've seen. The hill is not steep but it is long with a gradual decline. The drop in height from the top of the hill to the Hampden Crossroads is about seventy feet. From time immemorial, heavy rainfall has resulted in rainwater pouring down the hill and drainage ditches, as you have seen, have been dug on both sides of the Pettworth Road. However, until this application was first mooted, nobody took the responsibility of clearing the ditches which have become clogged with brambles, fallen branches etc. That tends to mean that the water itself pours down the middle of the road and doesn't go down the ditches at all. I'm seriously worried that if there is no firm maintenance contract in existence before this application is approved, that the drainage ditches will continue to remain clogged up with bridges done and that the water will continue to pour down the middle of the road. And now although this, the plan by Surrey Highways is an adequate plan, it only works if it is properly maintained, and there doesn't appear to be a definite maintenance contract in existence. So that's my main concern. The other point that I'd like to say is the, from the Surrey Highways point of view, so from the Surrey Hills point of view. In Surrey Hills, say this is an overdevelopment in the Surrey Hills AONB, but the Surrey Hills takes no consideration of the fact that this is previously developed land and that the addition and expansion of just five houses over and above that which is already on the site will have an insignificant reason. However, I would like to add one condition, condition number twenty-nine, that planning permission if granted for plot one on page ten, when resold by the developer to a third party, must be for one building and one building only, and the site should not be used for the construction of more than one building. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. I just don't know where to start, actually. It starts on the idea that the affordable housing is needed in the rural exception site. I don't think any of us have any objections to that, the small-scale rural exception site. Seventeen houses, I don't consider a small-scale rural exception site in a Green Belt. There's ordinary land but there's Green Belt land as well. There's a difference in that one. And if you look at the footprint of the five market houses, and not just the footprint but the first floors and the second floors, I believe that actually they are even bigger than the affordable housing which, there are two bungalows that are only one and two bedroomed, there I think are a couple of three-bedroomed and the others are two-bedroomed. If you added up the amount of bedrooms and sitting rooms and garages of the market housing, I believe is actually greater, I'm not a mathematician, but I would say it was greater than the affordable housing. affordable housing. Therefore, it actually outweighs the amount of building that the affordable is doing. And in that, in my view, I don't believe that's correct. Plot one has its own entrance. Why? Why open up a new entrance on the Wormley Lane? There is an entrance to Orchard Farm, it could come off Orchard Farm. If this application goes ahead, one can only assume that, I would concur with councillor Holder, that we've got absolutely no way of stopping that large plot, and it's huge, it's almost the size of where the affordable housing is built, less the roads, would then be, would come back and we'd have five or six or ten little cottages, they might be market housing because it now becomes a brownfield site because residential occupancy has been given on that site, even though it's in a green belt. We then, I don't believe we could then say, I'm sorry, it's inappropriate, because they'd say, well, we've got twelve little one and two-bedroomed just below and there's the cherry tree, what were council houses, some are still down on the other part of Wormley Lane. I just don't believe that that amount of market housing and that plot one is an enormous house. Anybody who wants to build that enormous house overlooking that bit, I don't believe would happen. So I don't believe that that meets the criteria for the affordable housing and I don't like the extra entrance to plot one. The flooding that goes down, while I would agree that the application site is well looked after and you are removing the groundwater that stays there and floods down at the bottom, hence the ditches by the shelling and stuff, because it is boggy, I can assure you, I've only been on it for two years and I've had to wade through the water at the bottom. What you're doing, and quite rightly for your application, is to remove that, you know, with attenuation tanks and move it elsewhere. If I lived elsewhere, and that's what I'm here for, I think, I think it's morally wrong shifting it from one place to another. And I can assure you that the people where you're moving it to, the ditches on the other side, have not been consulted whatsoever. And it came to my knowledge on Monday, when we did have a site visit for those of us could make it, and because I wanted to walk the ditches and they're not in the ownership of the highways, I ought to seek permission from the people who live at the house at the bottom, could I go? And I was informed that there's a stream that comes out of the top of the hill on the left-hand side of the Petworth Road at the top, by a house called The Hill, and it runs all the way down the backs of the houses of Petworth Road and New Road. It goes under a pipe under the lawn of the last bottom house and goes back out and it ends up on the corner of New Lane. Were you aware of that? So it's a big stream that comes from springs at the top, just like it does on Gorse Hill. So that is, so what you're doing is looking after the site, which is absolutely right because we're here to look after one site, but it's now moving at a gentle flow onto Whitely, adding to what they already have. And then it's going to end up at the bottom at Tigborne Wood, I think it's called, the last house, flooding there, and Tigborne Farm. And I don't believe either of those people have been asked, can we, could you allow extra water on our land? And I just, in my heart, feel that it's, it's wrong. It's too big. I don't believe that, that all the local people have, their properties have been taken into consideration. It's not like me and the officers would agree, but the market housing is too much for that, it might be for that amount, so one market house for, you know, five houses, but built up on what were they called, the previously developed bit of land, which is at the top, half those market, the affordable housing isn't where there were buildings, that's in, on the fields. The buildings are up at the top. So if that bit was developed with the access where it comes in from Orchard, the entrance to Orchard Farm from the Wormley Road, it might be different. But as it stands, I'm really sorry, I don't believe that the Surrey Hills, I think, added up. It's far too big in the, in the place it's in. And I think actually the Surrey Highway Officer did say that they were going to change, it says on the thing, they're going to change the flow rate, quite right, and direct it away. And that, I think, sums it up. You're directing it away from one place to somewhere else. And if I lived at the bottom, I don't want it directed my way. I don't live at the bottom, I live in Chittingfold. So no need for the new access. Plot one, I don't see how we can ever preserve that site once it becomes, we give planning permission, it's then got residential use and it could become anything. You know, so I'm sorry, some market housing, yes, but as it stands, I'm afraid I couldn't support the application. Sorry.
Please, councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Chairman. I share the same views as councillor James, to be honest with you. I do, I do think there is need for affordable housing, but we need to listen to the parish councils on this committee. I'm a parish councillor as well, town council, and we're not listened to and I think they're in touch with the people and I completely concur with councillor James, so I'm sorry, but I won't be supporting it either.
Thank you. councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I recognise the need for affordable dwellings in rural and urban settings. The scheme proposed is inappropriate development. Are there very special circumstances to justify this? Some of these, these are listed on, I believe, page, pardon me, thirty-four, thirty-five. Is there local transport? Yes, there is. Is there genuine local need? Well, no, I'm not convinced that there is. The register at the moment in this parish is very short. Is this small-scale development? Well, not as far as I can see. There seems to be a mention in the agenda documents that small scale is defined as less than or up to ten, and this is not. I note also on page forty-nine that the floor space in the social housing are only just large enough compared to national space standards. And this to me, I will remind you that the social housing are items six to seventeen, the market housing are one to five. The fact that the social housing floor space sizes are only just large enough suggests that the developers are doing this on the cheap, therefore minimizing the number of market houses they've got to provide. I would finally like to address the question to Mr Cleveland, our officer. If we were minded to reject the application, do we have adequate reasons to do so? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. You've just been challenged, I think, perhaps you'd like to respond.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you councillor Bolton for that question. I think it's, it's down to members to express clearly what their view is. We can then advise clearly on whether that might be a sound reason for refusal, if that's where you want to go, but I think we need to clear the debate on this point first, come to a view and then we can advise on what the outcome of that. I'm not in a position to say whether you've got a reasonable chance of refusal because our officer recommendation is one of approval, which we think the scheme's acceptable. There is a number of matters, but shall I pick them up at the end once all members have...
Yes, I think councillor Holder wants to come back.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. There does seem to be the opinion in this committee that perhaps a smaller scale would be more appropriate. I'm wondering if we perhaps could propose that this application be deferred and allow the applicant to come back with a small, smaller scale plan and also with a definite maintenance contract for the management of the ditches.
I think, I think it would be a case of determining this one. I don't think we could defer it, could we, officers?
Thank you, Chairman. Just if I could come in, this scheme is put forward on a detailed viability model. What we've had assessed independently is the information they've put forward demonstrates the number of market units are the optimal amount to deliver that number of affordable homes. So if you say you take away one of the five market dwellings, that would impact on the delivery. We have had that independently assessed as we usually do for members, so we can give that advice for them. So I think we've got to determine what's before us based on the advice we've got on the viability and that is the optimum level of provision for seventeen units overall to come forward and we have to base a decision on that. Looking at other schemes, that's a whole different viability assessment, whole different layout, whole different drainage proposal, everything changes, so you're looking at a significantly different scheme. So the development has been brought forward on the basis of this and developed on that basis, so I think we need to determine it in accordance with that.
Thank you. Would you like to address some of the other points that have been raised?
Thank you, Chairman. I've just worked through, I won't pick up on everything, but there's, there's quite a lot of concern, councillor Holder and councillor James, particularly regarding plot one and the potential for future development. We are in the green belt, so the very special circumstance we're accepting is on viability grounds. So plot one is only considered, and plot ones to five are only considered to be acceptable because we've got that clear very special circumstance set out. If the development came forward, someone then sought to construct further development within that, that plot, which is a, in a large plot, they would need to demonstrate very special circumstance. And just because there may be case law that deals with residential curtilage outside of built-up area boundary and suggests that's brownfield land, that wouldn't therefore allow them to build a new dwelling. We still then apply the normal green belt test of whether it would harm the openness. And an additional dwelling, of course, would, which we've concluded on the market dwelling, so we've weighed up that very special circumstance. There's a point on maintenance of ditches and Glenn may add more if, not addressing it correctly, but there is an individual responsibility for landowners to maintain their ditches. So I think that's an important point to note and we often have that, that discussion around various other sites. The market housing, I won't repeat what I've said again, but the market housing is the optimal provision they've brought forward to ensure that the affordable can be delivered and come forward. It's not too much, it's not too little, it's the amount correct for that. And the floor space of those units have a bearing because the value of those properties are material to the viability of the scheme. In terms of national space standards, we often get schemes that come forward that don't meet that and I think it's, it's actually a positive that all the units do meet that national floor space standard. And with affordable units, you want them to be very close to that, if not on that, because of the level of affordability of those units. If you start having properties that are well in excess of that as affordable units, they then become, impacts on either viability or the actual affordability of them. So we do, do need to be careful of that as well. They are, I think, the main points, the matters of judgment on the AMB, I won't add anything more than Chris already has, and the heritage and drainage points are matters, oh sorry, the drainage point is a matter of technical opinion. We have an appropriate mechanism to deal with management, maintenance, and the MPPF is clear, is if a condition can deal with that matter, we must apply a condition on that, on that basis and be sure that that provides adequate control for us and, as you say, it is normal process for us to take, take that approach to securing detailed technical matters. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, I'm mindful of the, of the time that's passing. Councillor Bolton and then councillor James and then if, if we could sort of move on to the recommendation, I think that would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. Closer reading, and I apologize, I should have looked at this earlier, could we, I refer to page thirty-five, the three conditions, A, B and C, at the top of the page. I would like officers to clarify, C, it says all of the dwellings are subsidized affordable housing. This is not the case with this application. Not all the dwellings are subsidized affordable housing. Thank you.
Yes, Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, that is the, so policy H six is the local plan policy. Bear in mind that was adopted in two thousand and two. We have had since the MPPF, which both Chris and Andrew set out that, given the loss of subsidies and funding that's gone in since the adoption of this, we are able to rely on funding effectively from market homes or subsidy from market homes. And the MPPF obviously is adopted more recently, so we do need to take that guidance ahead of H six. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. The other thing that concerned me slightly on page sixty-five is condition twenty-two, which says a detailed scheme of external lighting. I'd like to point out that there is no lighting in any of this area whatsoever. It's a very rural area. None of the houses round there have any lighting whatsoever. Up New Road, there isn't lighting, so by putting lighting into that affordable area would be completely contrary to what happens in that open space. So you are urbanizing a greenfield site in the AONB, in a green belt, in the Surrey Hills and everything else. So that would be another reason that I am not happy with that at all, because if you want people to live in a rural area, then they have to abide by what we all do in the rural area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Peter, you'd like to come back?
Thank you, Chairman. I think just a slight tweak to that condition can deal very easily with that point and I don't need to keep going back, but all we could put in there is a restriction on any lighting and if any lighting were to be proposed or come forward, that requires a submission of a scheme to the council and then we can determine whether it's appropriate at that point. But we can tweak condition twenty-two to say no lighting development shall, no lighting shall come forward and if it, if it were to be proposed, a detailed scheme must be submitted to and approved and carried out in accordance with council's agreement. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Upton.
Very quickly, Chairman. When I first saw the scheme proposed, I thought it was quite a good scheme, but then on the balance, I thought it was overstating the case. And having listened carefully to councillor James's submission and also having walked the site on my own around those perimeter and tracks, I'm rather concerned that perhaps not full allocation has been taken or consideration has been taken of the existing water. So I'm a little hesitant on being able to recommend this plan.
Thank you. Members, are you happy to move on to the recommendation now? Johnny, good, thank you. So the recommendation A is that permission be granted subject to conditions one to three and five to twenty-four set out on pages fifty-eight to sixty-six of the agenda, with the amendment to condition four, as well as additional conditions twenty-five to twenty-eight as set out on the update sheet, and subject to the completion of the section one oh six agreement to secure the provision of the affordable housing included mixed tenure model of affordable rent nominations agreement process, provision of the self-build unit, submission and approval of the management strategy for open space and SUDS within three months of the date of the committee resolution to grant permission and subject to referral to the Secretary of State and no receipt of a direction calling the application and the amendment to condition twenty-two regarding lighting. May I have those in favor of the recommendation to grant?
One, Chairman.
Okay, and those against?
Eight, oh, seven, seven, Chairman, sorry.
And abstention.
One.
Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is rejected. May I have a proposal that this application be refused, planning permission, please? councillor James, under second there? councillor Thornton? Right, members, can you please put your minds to reasons that you would like to give for this application to be rejected? councillor Holder.
I know that you have stated that this proposal would be unviable if it is reduced in scale, but nevertheless, I think we should give the applicant the chance of producing a plan that suits, rather than dismiss it out of hand when it may well...
The application's been rejected, councillor Holder, so it'd be down to the applicant to come back with an alternative scheme. Thank you. So reasons for rejection, councillor Bolton, you look like you're about to leap into action.
Is it adequate to say the scheme is inappropriate development and we do not feel there are very special circumstances to justify this? Full stop. Is that adequate, officers?
Officers, comments, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it's for members to exercise that they, that's the point, that we ask members to exercise their judgement on of whether they think it's appropriate, well, it's inappropriate development, and you need, yes, as a starting point, and you don't think there's very special circumst, sorry, special circumstances that exist to outweigh the harm of inappropriate form of development in the green belt.
Councillor James, you'd like to add something?
Well, I was just going to say, because it's not small scale, and just being practical, if you need five big dwellings to do twelve affordable housing, you could then do one dwelling for five or four, you see? I mean, that, I'm just saying, that I don't believe, it does say it's a balancing act, and I don't believe the scales are right. I think it's too heavy in one way. It isn't small scale, so it's inappropriate, and it would affect, it does not enhance or conserve, I think the words are usually, the green belt, the AOMB. And it would have, because as members saw, that the three houses at the bottom that the officers did point out, which are already built, are of the same level and lower than Tigborne Court. All these new houses are going up a hill right to the top, and every one of those houses will look over the top of the site, especially in winter, and Tigborne Court is affected. So it does have, it is, does affect the setting of a grade-one listed building. Because it's, I think we have views into and out of, so it's definitely, they might not see so much, but everybody else will see, and it is a unique property for those that haven't visited.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to go with what councillor Bolton said, to be honest.
Okay, thank you. So, officers, have we put together reasons for refusal? Can we adapt reason number three under recommendation B by taking out the reference to affordable housing and no very special circumstances exist to outweigh the harm to the green belt and the AOMB? The proposal conflicts with the objectives of policy C one, C three of the local plan and guidance contained in the NPFF? Question.
Chairman, is it okay for coming? Yes, that's appropriate. Tim and Elizabeth have both just set it out, that I think we need to set out the two reasons for refusal on the basis. One, specifically relating to the green belt, so just as you've read out that wording, and we need a separate reason that deals with the AOMB, because there's separate tests that you need to apply in policy terms, and so we draft, it'd be a similar reasoning in terms of the AOMB point, but two separate reasons. Firstly, harm to green belt, and secondly, harm to the AOMB.
Councillor, will you?
Sorry, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I totally agree with those, but I do take councillor James's point about the effect on a grade-one listed building. I don't know how you put that in Plan E, but if our officers could help, I'd be grateful.
I think that would be a paraphrase of reason number two under recommendation B, wouldn't it? Substantial harm to the set in the grade-one listed building, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just slightly tweak in that, though, because and identify, it's not outweighed by the identified public benefits, because this is specifically drafted in the absence of a section one oh six legal agreement, and it relates purely to affordable housing, which the recommendation was that that was the benefit. So I think the identified public benefits, rather than referring specifically to affordable housing provision, because you don't feel that is the benefit.
A version of that wording then for to reference the listed buildings. Okay.
And I think more of a holding reason, but to protect the position of the council, if they were to go to appeal, I think you still need to apply reason one, because we would, in the benefit, if they were to go forward, we still need a legal agreement to secure the affordable housing provision, so it's effectively like we would apply an infrastructure reason for refusal, it's one that would fall away if a legal agreement came forward in its entirety to deal with that. So there'd be effectively four reasons there. Thank you, Chairman.
So we have the four reasons as outlined by Peter there. We have a revised recommendation proposed by councillor James, seconded by councillor Thornton, that planning permission be refused for the reasons we have just discussed. All those in favour?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you, Members. The recommendation to refuse is agreed. Sorry, councillor Sims. Sorry, councillor Sims.
Sorry, Councillor.
Councillor, I've just, sorry, I've just demoted you.
And it's just that Mr. Devlin, our lawyer, is wanting to suggest a further reason to pick up on the failure to enter into section two seven eight agreement, so I'll just pass over to him to advise the committee on that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I feel that some of the highway drainage measures, some of the drainage measures are in the actual highway, as well as being SUDs within the site. So I think we need a section two seven eight linked to the one oh six to deal with the provision of those measures. So I think where we refer to legal agreements, we need to refer to a highways act, section two seven eight agreement as well. Do you agree? Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Are we agreed on that? Yes, agreed, thank you. So if you could add that in, Peter. Councillors, it is approximately nine forty-five, getting towards that, and I have to produce the orange card regarding adjournment of meeting. Meetings of the council should normally finish by ten P M., but at a convenient time before then, the mayor, chairman shall put to the meeting the options of: one, agreeing to a half-hour extension to ten thirty P M. if necessary, so some giggling, giggling off stage there, at which time the meeting shall stand adjourned, or continuing the meeting until the council has concluded its consideration of the agenda, which I think is probably favourable, or three, adjourning the meeting. Can I have your agreement to continue the meeting until the council has concluded its consideration of the agenda? Yes, councillor Thornton?
I'm going to have to give my apologies for this one, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right, yes, certainly, thank you. Everybody else is agreed to continue, yes? Jolly good. So moving swiftly on, this is item A two, erection of a dwelling and detached carport outbuilding following demolition of existing dwelling and outbuilding as amplified by plans received twenty-five oh four two thousand and seventeen, revision of W A two thousand and fifteen double two nine seven at Thistle Rough, High Button, Thursley, G U eight six N R. Just before I invite Jennifer to introduce the application, I'm going to embarrass her again, because this will be her last central planning meeting as a Waverley officer, and as in the last meeting, I'd just like to thank her for her assistance over the years and her very professional attitude, and wish her much success in her future career. Thank you. So having embarrassed you once again, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The application's site is located to the south of Boundless Road and west of High Button. The site is surrounded by open fields with farm buildings and cottages located beyond to the south and southeast. The site comprises a detached dwelling and a detached outbuilding. The site is enclosed by timber post and rail fencing. These just quickly show photographs of the existing dwelling on the site. So the access is over here. These show the existing plans of the site. So this is the external wall with a veranda around the outside, and then this is the upstairs here, and the elevations. Before I move on to the proposed scheme today, you'll see within the report that there is history on this site. Replacement dwelling has been permitted on this site for, under firstly, a twenty fourteen application, and then it was amended in twenty sixteen via a section seventy-three. The only difference is in twenty sixteen was a slight increase in the ridge height, so the red outline shows the original permission, and the black, the revised, and then there were some alterations to the dormer windows, but essentially the overall bulk and scale and mass was considered to be acceptable and the same. On this scheme, so the proposal is for a replacement dwelling and a replacement garage. The differences between this scheme and the last one is that this is the scheme that was permitted, it's very similar this time, but it now has an extension area on the back here. I just want to raise at this point that the applicant has advised that were, has provided confirmation by email that were permission to be granted for this scheme, they would be willing to enter into a unilateral undertaking, so a legal agreement preventing any further extensions on the site for the dwelling. So these are the proposed elevations for this replacement dwelling here. So this is the kind of extra single-story area, and then it's just shown on the back there. And these are the proposed floor plans, so the full area on ground floor and then the first floor. For the garage, these are the existing garage plans, and then the proposed garage plans, which shows two carport bays for cars, a workshop and a log store in the end. Moving to the determining issues, the site is located within the green belt, outside any defined settlement area, where there is a general presumption against inappropriate development, which is by definition harmful and should not be approved except in very special circumstances. The other matters of principal technical opinion is the impact on trees and ancient woodland, which is highlighted within the report, and there were no objections raised by the council's tree and landscape officer, subject to some conditions. So the matters of judgment for councillors to consider this evening are the green belt. The national and local planning policy allows for a replacement of a building within the green belt, providing it would not be materially larger than the existing building, and it would be within the same use. The local plan policy RD two A states that a dwelling with a floor space greater than ten percent larger than the existing dwelling would be considered materially larger. The table on page one hundred and thirty-seven shows the planning history of this site, including the floor space of the existing dwelling, that previously permitted in twenty sixteen, so the plans I showed you earlier, and also that proposed under this application. The table shows the proposed dwelling would be a hundred and eight percent larger in floor space than existing. Furthermore, officers consider the proposed scale, bulk and mass of the building would be materially larger. Therefore, the proposed dwelling would be contrary to national and local policy and would be inappropriate development in the green belt, and therefore very special circumstances are required. With regard to the proposed garage, we would also consider that materially larger, as discussed on page one hundred and forty. I'll move to the very special circumstances now, while we're on that topic. The circumstances put forward by the applicant with regard to the replacement dwelling are listed and discussed on pages one hundred and forty-five to one hundred and forty-seven. Officers consider that, given the approved dwelling has not been constructed and therefore permitted development rights on that dwelling do not exist, the fallback position has very limited weight, and it would not amount to very special circumstances that would outweigh the harm to the green belt by virtue of its inappropriate development. Furthermore, the proposed dwelling would be more harmful to the green belt than the existing permissions, given its existence, its greater increase in bulk and scale and overall size. With regard to the replacement garage, officers are satisfied that very special circumstances exist, and that's discussed on pages one hundred and forty-seven to one hundred and forty-eight. The other matters for consideration this evening are the impact on visual amenity, including the Surrey Hills AOMB and AGLV, and the impact on residential amenity. Therefore, officers recommend that permission is refused as set out on page one hundred and forty-nine of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jen. This is a public speaking item, and may I first invite the parish council representative, councillor James Mendelson, to speak? Good evening, councillor Mendelson, and you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
My name is James Mendelson, and I'm the chair of Thursley Parish Council. As a council, we review many planning applications from Waverley, to the vast majority of which we offer no comment. That's not to say that we don't look at them carefully, it simply reflects the fact that the particular application falls within the Thursley Village Design Statement, and we therefore have no further comment to make in the knowledge that Waverley will consider it in the light of various other irrelevant policies. If we feel that an application conflicts with our design statement, we will, of course, object. And similarly, if we feel that an application would actually enhance the village or improve its housing stock, then we would actively support an application, but this happens relatively infrequently. As far as Thistle Rough is concerned, Thursley Parish Council supported the original proposal. Our support was based on the fact that the property is unique, the proposed dwelling would be a significant enhancement of the existing dwelling, and it would not conflict with our design statement. We were, of course, aware that the increase in size could prove to be a stumbling block, but nevertheless, we felt that the overall improvement of the site created special circumstances which justified our support. As you're aware, that application was refused, with the overall increase in size being a significant factor behind the decision. We understand and respect that decision. Having though reviewed the current application for Thistle Rough, Thursley Parish Council have again supported it. In reaching that decision, first, we felt that the amended proposal would, like its predecessor, provide a significant enhancement to the site in question, and would be very much in line with the objectives of the Thursley Village Design Statement. In addition, as such an unusual and unique site, we felt that it would not create a precedent, and it also appeared to address Waverley's concerns about the increase in size over the existing dwelling, depending on one's interpretation of the veranda that surrounded the house. Secondly, we felt that the application would provide a much better solution in the context of our design statement than the applicant's fallback position of adopting a rather piecemeal approach, relying on existing consents and the class A permitted development rights. Such a solution would inevitably result in a more drawn-out building process, with a consequential environmental damage and nuisance to neighbours. As a parish council, we are also very conscious of the views of our parishioners, and we are very aware that the majority of the other residents in this small and very cohesive hamlet of High Button have taken the trouble to support the application with none objecting. And we as a parish council, therefore, hope that you will give appropriate weight to this unusual and very balanced level of support. In conclusion, we believe that the applicant's current application provides a solution which we believe brings their plans back within policy, and is a markedly better solution than the alternative, which I understand the applicant will pursue, of proceeding with existing consents and permitted development rights. We very much hope that you will therefore be minded to grant permission for this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Mendelson. May I now invite the applicant Fiona Secret to speak? May I now invite the applicant Fiona Secret to speak. Good evening, Mrs. Secret, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the council. We would like to ask you today to consider supporting this application, which combines our consented building with a permitted development extension. Our plan is to build a modest home using an oak frame construction in the one-acre garden that we have created, surrounded by three acres of woodland and meadowland. We have already adopted measures to encourage wildlife, and in the woodland, we have planted over 500 native trees to replace a number of felled conifers. We are situated in a quiet corner in the hamlet of High Button and are not overlooked by any neighbours. You may remember that we came before you last year with a plan that was refused by a small margin. This scheme included the combination of the existing dwellings' PD rights and the approved dwellings' PD rights. We have addressed the concerns of the officers and members from that meeting, and have come back with a consented scheme plus the permitted development rear extension allowable. Not only have we simplified the design, but we have also reduced the floor area by 28%. Building the proposal is not in question, it is in how many stages? We already have permission to build a two-storey consented house, and will have PD rights to extend this with a four-metre extension at the back of the house once completed, which will not be seen from the road or from any neighbours. We are asking you today to build these two elements in one phase. This seems common sense to avoid unnecessary complications with the build itself, and taking into consideration the disruption to the site, neighbours and surrounding area. We accept that the Class A permitted development rights can only be used once, and that the rights will be withdrawn from any further development. We believe this can be done by adding a condition to this effect. You may be aware that we have had a high level of support with 24 letters, including our neighbours in High Button and the parish council, with no objections. We understand that the planning policies are made as guidelines, but we feel with a more, we feel that a more practical approach to this application needs to be followed, taking into consideration the site, the scale and the design of the proposal. It is important to note that this officer's report has calculated the increased percentages shown in the tables, using measurements of the existing building, but not including the veranda which runs around it. This area amounts to 39 square metres and has historically been added in four previous applications dating back to 2008, including our consented building, which is mentioned in the report. There is no explanation why the veranda area is included in previous applications and not in the present one. We have also noted a few discrepancies in the area sizes quoted, which makes it difficult to assess a like-for-like comparison. So to conclude, I have three points to make. Firstly, we have taken note of the comments made at the last meeting and come back with a modest design with a reduced floor area. Secondly, we know that we can build this house in two stages, it is only that we are asking to build it in one. And finally, while accepting that the new proposal may be larger than the existing building, it depends on what basis the calculation is made. You may find it useful to compare, using my scale models, which give you a better understanding of the volume of the buildings. Taking into account our environmental aims for this site, and taking note of the planning officers' wish to minimise the material harm, we feel that building this house in one phase is the most sympathetic solution to this build. We hope that you'll be able to support this application.
Thank you, Mrs. Secret. Now may I invite the Ward councillor, councillor Jenny Els to speak. Councillor Els, you also have four minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. For those of you who aren't sure where or even what High Button is, it's a small collection of dwellings and farms in the countryside between the Atherton Brook near Bullhead Green. Thistle Rough is currently a small chalet-style house, built in what can best be described as a rural style, being basically a timber-framed hut, built by and for Polish soldiers just after the Second World War. It's accessed by an unmade public highway that also serves other dwellings in the vicinity. As you've heard from the officers, Thistle Rough already has a planning permission to demolish the existing building and erect a one-and-a-half-storey chalet-style dwelling of 132 square metres floor area. This approved dwelling will benefit from permitted development rights, so the applicants could, as soon as the permitted dwelling is erected, add a single-storey extension to the rear under Class A permitted development rights. The officers point out in their report that technically, permitted development rights do not as yet exist, as the approved dwelling has not yet been built. However, as soon as the approved dwelling is erected, those PD rights will exist. This potential extension could increase the total floor area to slightly more than is being asked for in the application before you. So as things stand at the moment, the applicants could erect the dwelling, which they have planning permission for, and then erect a single-storey extension under permitted development rights. In 12 months' time, they could have a new dwelling for themselves, which would be very similar, if not identical, to that being considered this evening. Twenty-three letters of support from these neighbours have been received, plus the application has the support of the parish council. No objections have been received. The neighbours are all in favour of the proposed dwelling for aesthetic, conservation and wildlife reasons, but, in addition, one of the main reasons for supporting the application is that they would like to see the construction time and the associated disruption kept as short as possible. The unmade track leading to Thistle Rough and other nearby dwellings is very narrow and runs through mainly woodland. By building the dwelling as one project, rather than building the approved dwelling, and then starting all over again for the extension, the construction time would be shortened, and thereby the potential damage to the track reduced. I would suggest that reducing the disruption to the surrounding areas and occupants would constitute the very special circumstances necessary to grant permission. If the applicants so desire, the house already permitted will be built, and the permitted development extension will be built. But surely, it is better to approve the application before you for the same building, so that it can all be built at the same time. And the application also includes, as we have heard, a replacement garage, which the officers are happy with. And just one other thing, RD2A supplementary notes state, the floor space of the dwelling shall be measured externally and shall include porches. Four previous applications have included the veranda as part of the floor space. This time, it hasn't been included, I just wanted to emphasise that. Thank you very much indeed, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Els. Members, I open it up to you, councillor Upton. Are you not Oates? Councillor Hunter, I'm having a terrible night for names. It's old age, David, I'm terribly sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to note, on the electronic agenda, there's only 93 pages, I don't know what's missing in my agenda, but nevertheless, I'm prepared to support this application. I think it's quite reasonable, the application, and I will lend it my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy would like to explain why you've got less pages now. She doesn't want to, but she can, so go.
Sorry, that's because the paper version contains an exempt annex to the previous application, so there's nothing missing from this application.
If I may come back, so when you refer to a page we lost, so you'll have to sort it out if you want us to use electronic.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I can assist you going forward, it's not a problem.
Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There seems to be some debate or question about this percentage increase, and whether the balcony is included or excluded. I have a question for officers. Referring to the paper copy, page 146, where there's a table of percentages, have you used a consistent method in calculating the various increases? Are we genuinely comparing like with like?
Thank you.
I undertook all those assessments myself, so the percentage increases are over the existing dwelling as shown within that table. So the existing dwelling had a floor space of approximately 80-something, sorry, it's not in front of me right now, 87.71. And all the percentage increases on the permission since then, or the refused dwelling as well, relate to that 87.71 square metres, so they are, you can compare them within that table.
Thank you, if I can just come back, then are we, we're saying that the second from last 153% increase, that was refused, but we're now looking at something which is 108%?
Bless you, councillor Wheatley. Any further comments from the members? Councillor Upton?
Just clarifying the matter, there is no other constraints on the occupancy of the existing building. It struck me as being one of those temporary-type units that were built just during or after the war. The site is, can accommodate the plans that have been presented to us, including the extension, if necessary.
Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll try not to sneeze at you again. Were we minded to go against the officers again and accept this, would we amongst the raft of conditions that no doubt will appear, be able to ensure that this is the end of development and no further development could be allowed, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I said just earlier in my presentation, I secured agreement from the applicant, through the agent, that they'd be willing to enter into a legal agreement, so a unilateral undertaking, so they wouldn't be able to have any more extensions on the site for this dwelling. Furthermore, were we to get to that point, I would recommend a condition about no further outbuildings on the site as well. Thank you.
Members, any more questions before we move to the recommendation? So the recommendation is that permission be refused for the reason and informative set out on page 149 to 150 of the paper agenda. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse? And those against? Abstention, one abstention. Right, so what do we do now? So can I have a proposal that we grant permission for this and a second, please? Proposed, councillor Wheatley, seconded by councillor Hunter. Got their names right this time. So officers, can you suggest the usual conditions with the, with the special cases about the legal agreement and the PD rights for outbuild?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies, there will be, I'll be reading out quite a few, as the conditions I'm going to recommend are those that were imposed on the permitted development already on the site. So first of all, it would be a condition regarding samples or materials to be used in the development prior to development taking place. Secondly, materials of hard standing on the site prior to development taking place. Thirdly, that the detached outbuilding would only be used for garaging of vehicles and the workshops incidental to the dwelling, and not to be used for habitable accommodation or commercial purposes. Fourthly, for a landscaping scheme to be submitted prior to development taking place. Fifthly, for a schedule of landscape maintenance for a minimum period of five years prior to development taking place. Number six is with regard to the carrying out of the development in accordance with the ecological report that's been submitted. The seventh condition would be a plan numbers condition, which is a standard one, to ensure the development's carried out in accordance with the plan submitted. The eighth relates to the submission of a detailed scaled tree protection plan and related arboricultural method statement. The ninth condition would be for a scheme of supervision to be agreed for the arboricultural protection measures that would be identified within the previous condition. The tenth condition would be for details of any services to be provided or repaired, including drains and soakaways, to be submitted and approved by the local planning authority, and that's again with regards to trees, to make sure that where their position doesn't harm the trees on the site. The eleventh condition is with regards to a construction management plan regarding parking of vehicles, loading and unloading of plant and materials, storage of plant and materials, and cement mixing, again, to make sure that it's minimally eight metres away from mature trees and four metres from hedgerows. The twelfth condition would be with regard to ground levels of the site and the proposed dwelling on the site. Thirteen would be removing permitted development rights for Class E, which is the outbuildings, enclosures, swimming pools, et cetera. The fourteenth condition would be with regards to, what I would say, within two months of substantial completion of the carport outbuilding hereby permitted, the existing outbuilding on the site shall be demolished and materials removed from the site, to ensure that we're left with just one outbuilding. The fifteenth condition just states that the detached carport outbuilding thereby permitted shall not be exercised or implemented in addition to or in combination with the development already granted by virtue of a certificate of lawfulness. There is a certificate of lawfulness on the site for two outbuildings, so essentially says you can have the outbuildings or the, or this carport, not both. And that concludes the conditions. And then lastly, there would be the resolution to grant, subject to the unilateral undertaking being agreed within a set time period. Sorry. Oh, and the reasons for granting, which are required. Thank you, Chairman.
We end up with 15 or 16 conditions, was the legal agreement, was that, that's not a condition, no? Okay, and presumably we need a recommendation B on that as well, do we? That if the legal agreement isn't entered into within a certain time?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, that's quite correct, recommendation B, and it would suggest a three-month period to allow the completion of that legal agreement. Just one other point, Jen has referred to it, but we need to set out, because the recommendation or the very special circumstance being set out to go contrary to policy, members need to set out in a decision the reasons for granting, so the reasons why I think it's appropriate to go against the policy position. If you're happy, I'll just read out what I think based on what the discussion was, rather than going into further debate, but, okay. It is considered that considerations exist that outweigh the harm to the Green Belt and any other harm so to amount to very special circumstances. The very special circumstances are that a permitted development fallback on the extant permission exists. The, pardon? Not, sorry, notwithstanding, the position that this permission, sorry, bear me one minute, it's scribbled all over the place. I'll let Jen, sorry, I'll pass it back.
Sorry, I was writing on it. So it is considered that considerations exist that outweigh the harm to the Green Belt and any other harm so as to amount to very special circumstances. The very special circumstances are that a permitted development fallback on the extant permission exists, notwithstanding the position that this permission has not yet been implemented. The proposal would result in an overall enhancement of the site by reason of design, and the limited harm, and due to the limited harm resulting from a reduced build-out time. Consequently, this fallback position is considered to amount to very special circumstances, to outweigh the resultant harm and conflict with policies C1 and RD2A of the Waverley Borough Local Plan and section nine of the MPPF. I hope that made sense, it was a bit convoluted, but thank you.
I couldn't have put it better myself. Right, so we have revised recommendation A, proposed by councillor Wheatley and seconded by councillor Hunter, that's subject to those 15 conditions and the and the legal agreement being entered into within three months, that permission be granted for the reasons we've just discussed. All those in favour, please?
Six, Chairman.
Against?
One.
And one abstention. Thank you. And there would also be recommendation B, which I'm sure that you have the correct wording for, but if the legal agreement is not entered into within those three months, that permission be refused. All those in favour?
I think that's seven, Chairman.
Okay.
And one abstention?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So the revised recommendation A is permission be granted and the revised recommendation B that it be refused if the legal agreement is not entered into. Thank you very much, members. Sorry to keep you so late. There are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you very much.